We're starting right now. We're waiting for the live stream.
Nice, I'm almost up here with you.
It took me about five meetings to figure out how to walk it so it wouldn't go back. Broken and all the rest can walk really easily. Let's see, ten twenty-six.
Says that I'm still in a practice session though. Do you want me to say start webinar?
Oh, okay. Oops, sorry. Yeah, I just.
About the county's foreclosure system. When we're done here. Yes, hi. So begins the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee Hybrid Meeting is called to order. At twelve on the dot. Please announce your names before your comments, and if we could go through the roll call again, try and describe. Your general appearance, where you're located for for other people watching online. Go ahead and start.
We'll start with you, John.
My name is John Halen, soon to be not Chair of COBAC. I am wearing a black hoodie. I'm sitting in the center of your screen on site underneath the Big Bend logo.
Thank you, John. Carl, well, don't see Carl. Is Carl online?
No, okay.
Carl should be.
Hopefully, we can elect him in absentia.
Aaron.
This is Aaron Rivers. I'm wearing a, I'm online, wearing a brown T-shirt against a blue background. Use that he/him pronouns.
Thank you. Stephanie has let us know that she will not be attending today. Liz Woodfin.
Hi, Liz Woodfin here. She/her pronouns. I'm here. On site and I have blonde hair, blue eyes, and I'm wearing a bright blue shirt.
Thank you, Liz. Cory.
Hi, this is Cory. I'm joining via Zoom today. I'm a white woman and I have my blonde hair and a ponytail. I'm wearing gold rimmed glasses. It is an off-camera kind of day for me, so I'll probably mostly be off-camera, but I'm here.
Thanks, Cory. Liz Dieter Martin.
Hi, I'm Liz Dieter Martin. I go by she/her. I am here on site, sitting next to John, and I'm wearing a green sweater and a scarf.
Thank you, Liz. Nicholas.
Yeah, my name is Nicholas Raiden. I go by he/him-his. I am wearing a black sweater with a white undershirt. And a black and gray beard with kind of blondish hair and a headset.
Thank you, Nicholas. Whitney.
Hi, Whitney Bennett. I go by she/her. I have blonde hair and I am wearing a blue jacket. I'm online today.
Thanks, Whitney. Derek may be popping on for the second half, the latter half of this, and Amanda will not be present today either.
Okay, moving on to the land acknowledgement. This is John. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Clamack Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Okay, moving on to item number three, the draft minutes were not ready in time, so we're going to go ahead and push the approval of the draft minutes from the September meeting to the next meeting that we have in December. Do we have a meeting? We have a meeting in December. No, November, sorry. I'm chaos right now. All right. Public comment. Is there any member of the public on site or online that would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand.
Evie Lerner, you can unmute if you would like to leave some kind of comment or introduce yourself.
I think I did just unmute.
Yes, we can hear.
I'm just, I'm just coming to see what's going on. I've worked with accessibility things in other areas some years ago. And sometimes needed it myself, so I just came to see how this meeting, to just see what was going on.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Item number five, COBAC twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Strategic Plan Discussion subgroup meeting updates. First up is Improving Transportation and Infrastructure Group with Derek, Whitney, Carl, and Nicholas. Is there a member of that subgroup that would like to talk about any updates they might have?
If I could speak to it, this is Whitney. I could speak to it. Carl's not here. He definitely took better notes, but I can, I can talk to it. We have a couple, we had, we had a couple of goals that we were striving for, and one of them was to improve accessible transportation to and from the, I know the regional, the airport in Bend, and we, we, the Uber lift, yeah, and we didn't have a lot of kind of action items with that one, so it'll be a little easier if I can can talk more about the second one is, yes, exactly that one of kind of highlighting planning an event. And we had discussed, there's a disability day on December third, I believe. And that was one we were wondering if we could actually get an event together. But by the end of our conversations, it kind of seemed like that was a little, not quite enough time to pull all the resources together. And I'm not sure where the conversation landed with this, but there, we, we were hoping to focus on something in the spring and pulling a bunch of a few different other partners that are interested on gathering and doing another event where we're exploring some of the sidewalk areas and in terms of accessibility specifically in that interface along Highway twenty and near Juniper Park where we can demonstrate some of the challenges that are experienced with trying to navigate some of these unfinished sidewalks. And so one of the questions I think we had was whether or not this kind of still fits into what we can do here as in terms of it's not going to get done. We had said six months, but it doesn't really give us enough time to plan something, but targeting to do something in the spring with it, with, with with a few of the other partners that were involved in the walk and rollabout last year. And that's a new, a new goal that we, or a new item we'd like to try, or something we'd like to try to plan for in twenty twenty-four. And that's what I have for updates.
Thank you, Whitney. This is Cassandra. I believe Carl had reflected that the updated timeline was going to be potentially May twenty twenty-four, so we've got that noted. And we're looking forward to that event and the partnerships you'll have across the city as well.
Perfect.
Great. Moving on to the next subgroup, creating an accessible community group. I guess there's a. For updates, it was a pretty quick meeting. I'm sorry I didn't send in a kind of update. We didn't have much. I met with Liz and we talked about the three items. One of them was having a day down at the park. I forget the name of the park. Miller Park, Miller Landing. And we were wondering if it's best for us to come up with a budget for the barbecue. We were thinking of just doing boiled hot dogs, something like that, something easy to hand out to kind of really highlight the the future build that's going to be there on site for accessibility of the river. But also just to have, try and just get the word out that we exist as a, as a committee and to show the community that we can be a resource for them. So I think we're going to try, I'm going to go to the restaurant wholesale place and come up with a budget for hot dogs, buns, sodas, and of course, the cost of renting the pagoda there and figure out next steps. So we're going to come up with a budget for the barbecue. We're shooting for early June, I think, or late June. And we will have a budget together hopefully soon to send to Eric King. The second item, we didn't have much progress. It just comes back to, we were thinking that it might be nice to have a Google Doc that could be shared among all of us so that when we come upon a resource in the community that could potentially benefit people that we represent, we could add it to it. And this goes back to the whole idea of having everything that someone could want in this town regarding accessibility, being able to be printed on a one-page PDF. And so that, the idea is to replicate that on a website so that if you have questions about service animals, if you get, have questions about accessibility, then we can, we can do something about that and have that resource. So it would be nice if the, if maybe Cassandra could set up a shared doc that we could add to, or maybe people could just submit in by email, different resources they've come across in the central Oregon and the state of Oregon and the United States.
All, all in one page.
All on one page. Lots of hyperlinks.
I, I, I would certainly be available to, to, to begin creating, I think, being really clear that we would like to make that a webpage. Is that kind of where it's not, the working document is the only issue pertaining to public records. And so would really strive, I think, to get that webpage. And that, interestingly enough, is something that the Human Rights and Equity Commission is currently work on with resources for individuals in the community who have experienced discrimination. So I see some nice tie-ins that we could, we could be merging the two groups potentially in some of the work that we do to create kind of a holistic support system for folks in the community who've other experienced discrimination, don't know where to go or need support. So very excited about that initiative you all are taking on.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, the idea is if they're on our website and they click print, one page comes out. That's the, that's the end goal. And for the third item, we talked a lot about the public comment that we had at the last meeting regarding Cascade Lakes Brewing and like, how do we reach out to the business community in a positive way to try and you know, highlight the fact that, yes, you can follow the letter of the law, but the intent of the law is actually to be, to create a more inclusive community. And the law doesn't always allow for that, as evidenced by what happened at Cascade Lakes Brewing. So we're trying to figure out the best way to go about that. I've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce for Bend, and they are kind of just like, you guys come up with something and maybe we'll hop onto it. So they're not interested in collaborating with us at this point, but maybe you have an in with them.
This is Cassandra. I believe that Amanda had sent them a preliminary kind of scope questionnaire about like, how can we as the Chamber and city work together to, to create more, I guess, fusion between businesses for accessibility. So I think the path has started and I think it'll just take some persistence, which this committee does not lack, so I look forward to that.
Something that I discussed with a member of our community with a service animal, James Dorfey, outside of the subgroup, he was actually interested with the Cascade Lakes example of using it as a positive way to highlight businesses because me as a business owner, I had a dad with polio. My wife couldn't walk when I started dating her, and so I'm very hyper aware of, of the needs of someone who's having a hard time getting around. Not everyone has that kind of background. So he was actually thinking of creating a campaign to highlight businesses that didn't know better that they were being exclusionary, that have changed their ways and said like, oh yeah, we can just make this one table shorter and we're good. And really trying to use that as a way to promote local businesses and positive change in our community for accessibility. So that's kind of something that is in that wheelhouse.
W here. John, when we get to the next subgroup, I will expand more on that.
Cool. Excellent. We'll do that right now. Next subgroup, creating a culture of accessibility with the City of Bend organization.
So Stephanie, Amanda, and I, this is Liz W here. We got together this week to talk about a couple of things, and we identified three objectives for the subgroup, creating a culture of accessibility. The first objective is, is that we feel really strongly that the underpinnings of creating a culture of accessibility is building a foundation of education in our community. And while we oftentimes think of a disability being something we can see, but what about can't be seen? Everyone's impacted by trauma. It's pretty pervasive. And Trauma Informed Oregon offers educational pieces that layer in ways to build trauma-informed culture. And so two objectives that we have under that first objective is short-term. By the end of twenty twenty-four, we'd like to see a third of the City of Bend staff completed trauma-informed care trainings through Trauma-Informed Oregon, which is free if you do it online. And then the second objective for that is one hundred percent of the city staff will have completed the trauma-informed care trainings within three years. The second objective that we really like to hone in on is that engagement with the Bend Chamber of Commerce. Amanda reached out via email to Cyrus. They're at the Chamber, and we really hope to increase awareness and build relationships towards our overall goals of creating this culture of accessibility. And we have two objectives underneath that, too, is by the end of twenty twenty-three, we would like to meet with Cyrus Mooney to strategize further partnership opportunities between COBAC and the Chamber. And then a longer term objective is by the end of twenty twenty-four that we have engaged in at least four events in collaboration with the Chamber to include, but not limited to several of these other ones. I don't know if you want me to read these verbatim or.
Love to hear.
So Cyrus will present to COBAC about Chamber opportunities for our partnership. And then COBAC to share its strategic plan in the Chamber's members' news. And then COBAC to present information at a table during a Chamber of Commerce or, and/or coffee event. And then COBAC to present a panel for a Chamber employer engagement or learning event. The third major objective that we have is collaborating with Andreas about implementing and continuing to build a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend. And the short term is by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that we meet with Andreas to discuss further strategies for objectives one and two. And then longer term, establish ongoing partnership with the City of Bend personnel to reinforce our cultural objectives. So really like building a foundation of education and networking to create the culture that we hope to have. Stephanie had a really great Zoom meeting with Andreas, which we are very appreciative of. Thank you for your time the other day. And it's exciting because I think initially we felt like this subgroup of creating a culture of accessibility was really ambiguous. And that meeting really helped, I think, hone in on, you know, what's our culture like now? And what we'd like to see in the future and solidifying that more is like a independent subgroup of the other two, which we felt in the beginning, I think, was more playing a supportive role of the other two subgroups. So that's really exciting.
John, this is Cassandra. If I could ask that just the floor be open for any feedback or input for any of these initiatives or thoughts? As these are not subcommittees, we can't come to it with recommendations, but these are just suggestions at this point. So if anyone has feedback input, would open the floor up to them for some feedback of any of the three sub, subgroups that we've heard from today. And thank you all so much for those very thorough and documented plans. It's exciting.
Took me. I opened the floor for a comment regarding the presentations by the three subgroups. We're looking for feedback on the discussion we've had for the last ten minutes or so. Is there anyone that would like to talk?
Hey, this is Cory. I appreciate everybody's work and everything that everybody presented. I wanted to kind of make a comment, I suppose, on working with the Chamber in response to the brewery, the, the name of which I'm forgetting, but was, you know, obviously very upset about last month. I don't have a lot of optimism for that because it's really a policy issue. And I kind of feel like, I think it's really great to address that way and kind of like, you know, think through businesses that do value accessibility and kind of rewarding that. The issue there is like ultimately policy and that it's allowable to not have an elevator if you have under a certain amount of square feet in your, your building, you know. So I think that's something to think about. And yeah, I just wanted to throw that in there.
Cool. This is John. I actually went to Cascade Lakes Brewing East Side after the meeting, and I met with Andy, the manager and part owner. And it kind of goes into what I was talking about earlier about following the letter of the law, but kind of missing the intent. You know, I, I could see on site, they have mostly booths. They have two ADA height counters or seats, but they face a wall. So if anyone comes with any friends, they're not going to be able to sit with them. But there are three tables on the opposite side of the building that are in the center where one could just be a much lower height and not standing height. That would be a huge improvement. So that's why I'm kind of like, I don't know if this is a thing the Chamber would want to get into because it is following the letter of the law. So what can they do? I think it's more about highlighting to businesses that, yes, you can follow the requirements, but still just totally whiff on the intention. And highlighting to these business owners who want to be inclusive, that like, hey, like, I know you don't have to require this. Like, it's not, but it would really mean a lot and go a long way to make these certain improvements on your property, like just by having. You would, it would be a game changer. And I think that's why it's, it's, I'm hoping that we can put a pauses and kind of highlight businesses that are following the letter of the law, but can make small improvements to make it more accessible. That'll be a win-win for them because then we can highlight them as COBAC, or we can get them in the news and be like, look, like they went above and beyond. Like, this is a great, a great business. So it's better to lead with honey than gasoline, I guess.
Uh, yeah, totally. I mean, I, again, I totally understand that, the compulsion for the lack of a better term. But it's really, it sucks. I really hate to let them off that easily because in that scenario, like even if that's unintentional, it's way negligent. And, and even just like having one table that's, you know, can be not, you know, counter height or whatever it is, I still, you know, find that to be like pretty kind of dehumanizing. And, you know, so it's just hard for me personally to try and, or to, to give any kind of positive recognition to that because it's, I don't know. But, you know, again, I do think it's, it's hard because it does, a policy change would be great, but that's probably pretty optimistic, I suppose. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's just my feelings and my two cents on that.
See, Nick, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. Yeah. So, you know, there's a couple of different avenues that as COBAC we could take on this. One would be to, I guess, craft some sort of letter or document that, that we send to the state building officials, basically highlighting highlighting the intent versus the actual letter of the law. Like, for instance, it does, you know, the, since I'm an architect, the codes are, you know, they're, they're pretty clear on that. But it doesn't mean that they have to be that way, like other states go above and beyond certain accessibility requirements. And so that could be something as a group, as a committee, that we could, you know, and Cassandra, let me know if I'm wrong on this, but we could craft a letter to the state. Basically using this as an example, saying that, you know, this doesn't necessarily meet the intent of, of accessibility, nor does it provide equal and fair access to someone who wants to enjoy the, the, the roof deck amenity on this, you know. Not that it's going to change this particular situation, it could, but, but going forward for new builds like restaurants like this to, to have that.
This is Cassandra. Thank you for those comments, Nicholas. I agree. I think that there is a great opportunity for, for COBAC to author that. And then tying into what you had just mentioned, Cory, I also see great synergy around the idea of the other groups and the goals that they have for education and specifically for businesses around universal design and bringing those principles and policies into new, new businesses, old businesses, right? Because we, we had an opportunity here with a brand new build to implement universal design, and that did not occur. And what does that say for equal opportunity and equal access for all of our citizens, right? So I think there's a great opportunity for synergy between all of the groups and also to bring Human Rights and Equity Commission into that. And so onboard, if the Creating an Accessible Community Group wants to begin kind of drafting that letter, and we could also see if there are other businesses who would be interested in, in signing on or just kind of collaborate with partnerships and community. I think there's an opportunity for that. And I love this conversation. Appreciate Nicholas and Cory, both of your thoughts on that. And John, those, those initial communications that you've had with other entrepreneurs and business owners. So, yep.
And I'd be happy to, this Nicholas again, I'd be happy to, to help craft that letter since I'm familiar with the code sections and what would be needed for that. So I'd be happy to help.
That would be a tremendous opportunity to, to utilize and harness your, your background, Nicholas. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And this is Liz Dieter Martin. Yeah, we, last year Carl gave out an award for a business that did a really good job of snow removal. What if we can expand on that and even, you know, encourage businesses to take a snow removal pledge? You know, or, or other things, other accessibility features. Again, trying to, you know, make it, making it, building a culture and making it a positive culture, not a punitive culture as much, you know. And, yeah, rewarding organizations. And then again, you know, sharing that out with the neighborhoods. Hey, these are, this business in your neighborhood, they, you know, got this award for accessibility. And I'd be happy to work for, further on that and work with Carl on that.
That's great. So many great ideas and there's a lot of good energy and I'm looking forward to, to these initiatives.
Yeah, this is John. We should have like a summertime award too, or maybe a, a highlight every meeting, almost like that we, we as committee members witness around town and submit for acknowledgement. Anyway.
Another question is, does, does anyone know if Lifties or what was Justies, does that have a elevator as well? I don't recall seeing that, but.
Like the plague, so I couldn't tell you.
Yeah. Just from a, because they also have a rooftop deck too, so just curious on that.
Yeah, I talked to, this is John, I talked to Andy and he said that, you know, I mean, like we heard on site at the last meeting, because it's twenty-three hundred square feet, they got away with it. And the cost was a big reason why they decided to not go that route. So I, yeah, but I, it's a, I don't know what to say about that.
Nicholas, this is Cory. Can you repeat the name of that business you just asked about?
It, it's called Lifties now. It's on Mount Washington near Chandler. It used to be called Justies.
Okay.
Before they had to change the name. It, it, it's a. Before they had to change the name. It, it's a outside kind of inside and outside bar, but it's got a beach volleyball court. It's got a rooftop deck.
Yeah, okay.
It looks like.
Okay, thanks.
EB learner. We accept the public comments during the public comment system, public comment section. If you can email your comment to accessibility@bendoregon.gov, that would be great. Thank you.
Cool. Are we ready to move on?
Yep. If there are no other, no other comments floating around from online, yeah, absolutely.
No one wants to jump on the barbecue budget committee with me? Or subgroup, I guess. Okay, moving on. Item number six, COBAC Business and Roundtable. We're going to vote on the COBAC December meeting date. The two options are Thursday, December 7th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM in council chambers or Thursday, December 14th from 12:00 to 1:30 PM in the neighboring boardroom. Should we just take a hand vote or do people want to take a minute to look at their calendars?
So I think specifically, this is Cassandra, my apologies, for the November meeting, it has to be changed to November 16th, 1:00 to 2:30. And the voting would be between the December, which I'll put those dates up right now on the PowerPoint for you all to check your calendars and times. There is also, I want to present to the group, knowing that this is not in our usual time and date, the opportunity to fully create this as a virtual meeting, if that would be more accessible for folks on the committee. Open, open for discussion.
Can you read off the dates again?
Yes, it's Thursday, December 7th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM in council chambers. And Thursday, December 14th from 12:00 to 1:30 PM in the neighboring boardroom.
Or virtually on either dates, if that's accepted by the group.
Or on Zoom, yes. Okay, if everyone's had a, John, if everyone's had a minute to take a look at their calendars. I am proposing, first option. Anyone in favor of Thursday, December 7th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM in council chambers, raise their hand. Okay, and all in favor of Thursday, December 14th, 12:00 to 1:30 PM in the boardroom, raise your hand. It's just two of us.
It's not neither or.
You can choose both.
Multiple choice.
I think December 7th might be the winner.
So we will, this is Cassandra, Lisa and I will reflect that in invitations that go out to update you for December 7th. Does COBAC at this point want to converse about the possibility of making that remote? Or would we like to keep it as is in city council chambers as a hybrid meeting?
I like, this is John, I personally like hybrid meetings. I like seeing people in person. Not ragging on anyone that's online.
Any other input on virtual, fully, fully virtual or a hybrid in council chambers and or online?
Yeah, this is Corey. I have a question about that. I'm wondering if personally, it doesn't, it's not material to me, but I'm wondering if there is any difference to staff who would attend, whether or not that's convenient considering the timing or, you know, that it's an meeting scheduled on a not typical time and day. So yeah, if there's any difference to staff, then that would be my vote, I suppose.
This is Cassandra. Thank you for that very thoughtful consideration. I think, I think staff is available and either present virtually or in person for the December 7th meeting. So I think we're, we're open to, to, to COBAC, but thank you for that.
Nicholas? Did you want to say something? You were raising your hand earlier.
Yeah, I'm open to either, but I prefer the hybrid and will try to attend if I'm not sick.
Now we are wishing you a speedy recovery, Nicholas. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
So did we decide?
We decided on
Seventh for sure?
The seventh.
Okay.
Hybrid meeting, 1:00 to 2:30.
Okay.
Council chambers.
And John, if we could step back and go around for the roundtable for folks who want to share, I know that you've got a few announcements for things coming up this next week.
Do I? All right, people want to go around and talk about what they've been up to, the last, since the last meeting, or things that they're looking forward to coming up. Now be the time. Yeah. I'm, are you thinking of something specific? There's a couple fundraisers happening at my bar that I'm really excited for. And hope to raise some money for some really cool organizations. And yeah, looking forward to snow.
Are you available to provide additional details for folks who might want to join?
Oh, yes. We're, we're having a fundraiser tonight from four to close at unofficial logging company where we're doing 20% of onsite, site sales will be donated to Embrace Bend. And that's going to be a lot of fun. And additionally, the week after, we are having a fundraiser for the Fathers Group onsite where people, organizations can buy lanes. I think they might already be sold out or they're close to it. I know the city of Bend, I think, has two lanes. There's 12 available or there were. And if you don't know the Fathers Group, I would look it up because it's an amazing organization here in central Oregon.
Thank you, John. Any other COBAC members have any updates on what you've been up to this month, anything pertinent to accessibility or equity in our community? Please feel free to share and jump in.
Speaking of equity, I guess I have one thing to say that's been kind of, I've been thinking about lately. I've been taking, I encourage everyone. There's a free thing with Deschutes County called County College. It's their employee onboarding program. And when they have extra seats available, they open it up to the public. And so for free, you can learn about all the different departments in Deschutes County, which I signed up for, thought it was going to be really boring and it's been absolutely eye opening and I highly recommend people sign up the next time they do it. So keep your eyes peeled. It's the disturbing thing I learned this last Tuesday was that in foreclosures in Deschutes County. Let's say you have a house and you get $15,000 worth of taxes on it, back taxes. They take your house, they auction it off. The county pays its, let's say it auctions off for $150,000. The county pays itself back the $15,000 and the money that is over that goes to the taxing district and not the former owner of the house, which I find as just a completely unacceptable way of stealing from people who are the most vulnerable. Because if you're not paying property taxes, you're, you're not in a good spot. And the idea that you are taking an asset and using it to fund your tax district is, to me, just seems like theft. I know that there is a case in the Supreme Court that recently said that counties themselves might be responsible for paying back people, at least this is in, I think Michigan where this happened. But the county, until they figure out everything from the Supreme Court ruling has halted foreclosures. I know I'm going to be reaching out to the commissioners themselves because I find that wholly unacceptable. It doesn't make sense that if I have an asset that's worth $300,000, for instance, and they auction off my house to pay off taxes and let's say auctioning fees and maybe cleanup of the site, that the remainder doesn't go to the previous owner. So as far as equity, that's making me lose sleep this week.
I'd be curious as to how many counties are like that. That's probably pretty standard practice. That should be changed.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Hey, this is Corey. John, I really appreciate, appreciate that update and I totally agree with you. I did want to mention for the roundtable that while I was traveling this last month, I was in Portugal and Spain, which was really long planned trip and it was really fun. But in Portugal and Lisbon, there is a museum that is called the, you know, in Portuguese, but the Museum of Resistance and Liberation. And it's a super, like, it was really incredible. And it was, the building itself was used to house political prisoners during Portugal's fascist regime. And so it was a lot about commemorating resistance to fascism and the really, I mean, one of the really amazing parts of it was that the building itself was incredibly, really did a lot of work to make it incredibly accessible experience. Though this building is, you know, very, 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 very old. And prior to being used as, you know, a prison for political prisoners, it had been a women's prison before that and just had been used for all sorts of various, you know, nefarious things for hundreds of years. But despite the, the age of the building, they did have an elevator in it. Throughout the exhibit, you know, throughout the floors and the exhibits, they had chairs that you could bring out and sit in front of any any part of, of the exhibit, which I thought was really nice, considering, I mean, a lot of museums don't have any seating basically throughout. So that was just something I thought was really special and pretty cool and thoughtful. And so I just thought I would share that.
You said it was called the Museum of Resistance?
It's called the Museum of Liberty and, or, sorry, Resistance and Liberation, I think, or maybe vice versa. But the building is called El Jubé, A-L-J-U-B-E, I believe. But it was really, it was really incredible and especially to be in the building and, you know, see where people were and it really commemorated a lot of individuals who, you know, were, were killed or imprisoned or hadn't really fought to against fascism. So yes, it was wonderful. I mean, I encourage anybody to check it out if you're ever over there. It was definitely a great place to avoid crowds. Basically, nobody was sitting there. But, you know, of course, but it was wonderful. It was really wonderful. So.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? Cool. It's going pretty quick. Next up, we are accepting volunteers and nominations for chair and vice chair. The new nominees will start at the November COBAC meeting. Okay. For the chair and vice chair nominations. From the voting membership, a chair and vice chair will be elected by the committee's voting members. The chair and vice chair shall serve one-year terms. Following the expiration of the chair's terms, the vice chair shall automatically be nominated for the chair position. Additional nominations for the chair and vice chair positions may be received from the committee membership. Election of the chair and vice chair positions shall occur as needed. We now open the floor to seek nominations for the position of chair.
John, if I could interrupt you, I'm so sorry. This is Cassandra. We would be remiss if not having a tremendous extension of a thank you to you and Carl for all of the leadership and advocacy and commitment to COBAC in the last year. Really appreciate what you both have done.
Thank you. We now open the floor to seek nominations for the position of chair. A reminder that you may volunteer yourself for the position or nominate a fellow COBAC member with their consent. We note that Carl Burnett, per the COBAC Charter, is an automatic nomination for the position of chair. He actually thought the meeting started at 1:00 today, so he, that's why he's not here. Are there any additional nominations for the position of chair?
Nick? No. I'm kidding.
Okay, seeing as there are not additional nominations, we shall take it to a roll call vote. All those in support of Carl Burnett, please vote via roll call with Cassandra.
John?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Liz Woodfin?
Aye.
Corey Sparks?
Aye.
Deether Martin?
Aye.
Nicholas Reden? We didn't hear you. Nicholas, sorry, I don't know if the speaker was off.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Whitney Bennett?
Aye.
And Derek, Amanda and Stephanie are not present, so we have full support with seven votes in the affirmative.
Can I just say, I think it's hilarious that I said aye first instead of yes, and then you all said, had to say aye? So I just wanted to point that out. The vote has concluded that our new chair for November 2023 to November 2024 is Carl Burnett. Congratulations, Carl. I will text him and let him know that he has won it. Okay, we now open the floor to seek nominations for the position of vice chair. A reminder that you may volunteer yourself for the position or nominate a fellow COBAC member with their consent. We know that there are no automatic nominations for the position of vice chair and we now will seek motions for the nomination of vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Does this happen in all the other committees and groups? All these hands flying up?
I mean, I guess I'll nominate myself for vice chair.
I like that.
Oh, sorry, this is John Halen. I nominate myself for vice chair.
A second.
Are there any other individuals on COBAC who would like to submit a nomination for themselves or someone else on COBAC for vice chair?
Okay. Seeing as there are no additional nominations, we shall take a roll call vote. All those in support of John Halen as vice chair, please vote via roll call with Cassandra.
We'll begin with John Halen.
Yippee.
Aaron Rivers?
Aye.
Liz Woodfin?
Yes.
Yes. Liz Deether Martin?
Yes.
Nicholas Reden?
Yippee.
Whitney Bennett?
Yes.
And we have Amanda, Derek and Stephanie who are not present and that carries affirmatively to nominate John Halen as vice chair with seven affirmative votes.
Cool. The vote has concluded that our new vice chair for November 2023, November 2024 is John Halen. Congratulations to him. Excellent. All right. Do we have to make a motion to approve?
Nope, I believe that the vote that you all just had is, is what we need to reflect that for our records.
Excellent. All right. Moving on to item number seven. Congratulations to Carl and John, by the way. We have the Accessibility and Equity Manager update.
Wonderful. So for the update, this is Cassandra, Accessibility Equity Manager. For this section, it's going to be relatively short. We've got two items of business to conduct and the first one is the STIPEN survey. That was something that was sent at the beginning of October. It has been extended until October 31st. So we're going to take time now on this next slide. If you have not had an opportunity to complete the STIPEN program survey, to please do so at this time and feel no, be unabashed in scanning that QR code. We really are seeking as many pieces of feedback from individuals as possible. What we're doing with this information is getting information to see how STIPEN program survey, the STIPEN program survey itself is being used. If it's helping to offset barriers and lower the barriers. And that feedback will then be shared via city council. So the Equity Department will present that information as it is uh in our, in our requirement to do so after one year of this stipend program being in place. So with that, we'll pause just for um a couple of minutes uh for these to be completed. I appreciate your time and we'll be back in just a few minutes. This is Cassandra. Just would like to have a check in to see if we need a couple more minutes or how people are feeling on time with this stipend program survey. And some thumbs up online. Just give it maybe fifteen more seconds to wrap up. Very appreciative of your time to fill that out and that really helps us to continue to do the work. Um, and we do see this as very crucial to equity work in the city to make sure that folks who want to be part of these um committees, commissions and boards have the opportunity to offset costs with that forty dollar stipend per meeting. So your feedback is really important for us to, to paint that picture and tell that story to city council to continue um to provide this program. So as we wrap up, I will turn it over to our Equity and Inclusion Director, Andres Portella, who will give us a couple of updates on definitions and meetings before city council in this past month.
Thank you, Chair Halen and Committee. Uh, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to, to come and speak to y'all again. Last time we were in this space, we had a conversation around equity definitions. In jumping into my role, there was a moment in which we looked at all of the information that was shared with me and we realized that we had never took a second to define what equity could look like. What its relationship to accessibility, what's a relationship to the jobs, to the folks who are going to be doing this work. And so you, you all were extremely um integral to, to creating that definition. Uh, in creating that definition, um, we had some really robust conversation where folks said, this could be my on-ramp. This could be how it implements in different programming. And so um, uh, we went through that process last time. The way that it shook out is it started with ATRAC, it came to y'all next, and then went to city staff. From city staff, it went to mayor and coun- it went to mayor and council. And in that process, we came out with two definitions. One is our working definition and one is our aspirational definition. Uh, I will say that it's not the definition y'all chose, but it was, it was given as a recommendation uh, as how do we advance this work? Um, did we include that in the slide deck? Yes, so here's the equity definitions that we came out with. The first one being working towards fair outcomes for people or groups by treating them in ways that address their unique advantages or barriers. Um, that's OHSU's language inclusion. Additionally, we came out with our aspirational definition and the one that we're going to be working towards and applying to our work. Equity acknowledges that not all people or all communities are starting from the same place due to historic and current systems of oppression. Equity is the effort to provide different levels of support based on individuals or groups' need to achieve fairness and outcomes. Equity actionally empowers communities most impacted by systemic oppression and requires the redistribution of resources, power and opportunity to those communities. And that came from the State of Oregon's DEIA Action Plan, uh roadmap to racial equity and belonging. So I just again want to thank you all um for helping us come to this, these working definitions, allowing uh, um, city staff to find shape and place. At this moment, um, the next steps from here are, this, this is the definition that will be used when we come to H, uh, come to Coback with any decisions revolving around equity or accessibility. Additionally, um, this will be used by city staff in a variety of different spaces in our departments. Uh, when we say we're doing equity work and we're coming out with equitable outcomes, this is the lens we're applying to that work. Um, moving forward. I also want to give an update on uh our discretionary spending, funding, uh discretionary funding and sponsorship programs. Uh, before I do that, I want to apologize for not doing a visual description. Uh, I am a brown man with a black curly Afro, uh clear frames on my face as glasses and a dark green shirt. Jumping back into uh the policy change that we're, that we're uh going to be uh putting in front of council to make changes to. The first one being uh the purpose statement of our discretionary fin- funding policy is creating and maintaining an environment free of discrimination. So when community asks the city, can I, can I have some funds to uh put on an event? Or to do a, a part of our sponsorship program, additionally welcoming week? That's the first thing that will be a part uh as far as applying. The second is public purpose. All funding, however awarded, must be used for public purpose. A public purpose is defined as an activity or service that is open to all members of the public, regardless of race, color, national origin, age, religion, sex, including pregnancy, sexual orientation, religious affiliation, disability, veteran status, gender identity and genetic information. In addition, sponsorship funding may not be used to discriminate against individuals with disabilities. And sponsors must make all programs accessible to individuals with disabilities as set forth in the ADA. Additionally, uh, we included some language around ineligibility for profit organizations who intend to use the funding for specific business purpose or general commercial enterprise. Um, and so that uh, those are two big updates of work that we've been working on in the Equity and Accessibility Department. Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and pivot back to uh chair.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Um, I don't, is Counselor Campbell online? Okay. So I moved to uh table item number eight. We'll move on to item number nine. Um, the next Coback meeting is Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three from twelve to one thirty PM. Please note the time change for this meeting. Uh, is there any other Coback business? Okay, I guess we're going to get out early today. Um, the city of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, October twenty-sixth twenty twenty-three hybrid meeting is adjourned at twelve fifty-nine. Thank you.